Thanks for coordinating.
Go ahead.
Okay, I will call to order the work session for our council meeting today on July 15, 2024 at 5:00 PM, and this is the work session. And I believe it's a joint work session, is that correct, with Planning Commission? I still don't have visibility into council chambers there yet, so.
That's correct.
I might need some verbal clues on what's happening.
That's correct.
There on site, but welcome everyone and thank you for joining us and thank you for your patience as I am joining virtually this evening. We have one item on the work session agenda, and that is the Housing Our Future project. Is there any specific information that we need to have from staff before jumping in? Do we need to do any sort of introductions or have you all already done that in the room there?
Council President, we have not done any introductions at this time.
Would that be a helpful thing if we just did a quick introduction since this is kind of a special format with the Planning Commission and City Council together?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, let's please start on the side of the room. I'm going to, you're all just small little people there on my screen, let's see. Whoever is sitting closest to our city manager, could we start on that side of the room and go around?
Hi, everybody, my name is Yana Semenova, and I'm with the Planning Commission. Just brand new, started this year in January and still learning the ropes. It's been a good experience.
Excellent, thank you.
Carolyn Berry, City Councilor.
Joanne Linville, City Councilor.
Andrew Carr, Commissioner, Chairman of the Planning Commission.
Katie Dunwell, City Councilor.
Jennifer Willard, Planning Commissioner.
Matt.
That concludes our room?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, excellent, and we have another person joining on Zoom. Would you like to introduce yourself as well?
Yes, thank you, hi. Also joining remotely, Matt Constantine, Planning Commission, thank you for having me.
Great, and I'm Kristin Acrival, I'm the Council President for our City Council. And I do believe the mayor will be joining us shortly, but had another commitment this evening, but she's attending to most immediately. So I'm wondering if we could start with the staff presentation on this agenda item unless there's something else that we need to address. First, I don't have a script for this evening's meeting, so we're going off of memory here.
You're doing great.
Okay, great. But, and I wonder if part of staff's initial part of the presentation could be to kind of position this conversation and give us a bit of context. Why are we having this conversation? What is the big picture goal of the conversation? What needs are we responding to or what has prompted this discussion to happen? I know that some of us at least have received some comments from the community, and I want to make sure that we have all of that contextual information out there and that it's really clear to everyone as far as what the intentions are around this. Thank you, go ahead, staff.
All right, thank you, Council President Acrival. Good evening to City Council, Chair Carr, and the Planning Commission. My name is Kim Reibold, I'm the Senior Planner here with the City of Wilsonville, and here to begin this conversation with you all tonight about the Housing Our Future project. I know both the Planning Commission and City Council have had some initial informational briefings on this project separately at earlier points this year. And so a lot of that was the context of what the project is and why we're doing it. I can briefly highlight some of that key information here for any members of the audience who might be listening before we get into the meat of the conversation. And so what this project is, it's called Housing Our Future. Really, it is a project that we are doing to ensure continued compliance with statewide Planning Goal 10. So what is statewide Planning Goal 10? That is the statewide planning goal around housing. And so specifically, we as a city have a requirement that periodically we do an assessment of housing in the community to be sure that we are ensuring we have existing housing as well as future housing that will meet the needs of current and future residents of the City of Wilsonville across a variety of income levels and housing needs. And so that's kind of really broad, but what it, to kind of boil it down, what it means is that a lot of people at a lot of different stages in their life will have different needs for housing. So you know, at one point in your life, you might find yourself just starting out, you might be in an apartment, you might strive to own your own home at some point, maybe that's smaller at one point, maybe that's bigger, that changes over the course of life. That changes depending on where you are financially in your life. And some people in the community are better positioned in that regard and might have more options than others. And so what our work here is to do is to look at the current state of housing in the community and start thinking about what we need to be doing in the next 20 years, specifically 20 years because that is what the state law requires that we do in this project. Both looking at, do we have enough land within the city to accommodate growth? What kind of growth does that need to be and what should we be striving for? And ultimately, we're not doing that right now in terms of setting new policy, but what that will ultimately lead to is a discussion around, do we need to change any policies in the city, adopting new policies, look at things like our development code or our comprehensive plan, and think about what we might need to do in the future. And so what I will say is that we, in having this discussion, it's really kind of high level, looking at where we are right now and where we think we might be going. And you know, we're not adopting any new policies right now, we're really just having a conversation about some of the existing policies that we do have and how that has affected our housing. And so that is it at a really high level. I think before I launch into the agenda, I do want to take a moment and just ask if City Council or Planning Commission has any clarifying questions about the why of the project.
Thank you, and I wonder if I could, since I can't necessarily see raised hands or lights that are occurring within the room, I wonder if there is a, perhaps Councilor Linville, could you just jump in there, unmute and jump in if there's somebody in the room that wishes to speak? And for myself, I do want to ask staff, thank you for that bit of context. And I guess beside this being a statewide requirement, what happens if a community does not choose to plan for housing needs or consider what future housing needs are? What happens to a community then?
So that is a great question. There is an enforcement mechanism currently on the books that DLCD can't, and DLCD is the statewide agency that is tasked with managing the state's housing planning system. So that stands for the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So they are tracking this work and we do check in with them. They've actually provided us with the grant funding to do a lot of this work. But cities that do not meet their statutory requirements to plan for needed housing do, DLCD does have the ability to enforce on those cities. And so this has actually been a conversation that's been occurring a lot lately in some of the more recent housing legislation that has come up because I think there has been a concern that there perhaps has not been adequate enforcement of those cities that have perhaps not been meeting their housing obligations. And so one of the bills that was passed in the last legislative session actually established a new entity of the state that will be more proactively hearing complaints and doing enforcement of cities who either are not doing their statewide housing planning as they should be or who are not applying their planning or zoning laws as they should be and in doing so potentially prohibiting production of housing, so.
And besides like the legal situation, what happens to a housing market if leaders don't pay attention to what the needs are? What happens to housing supply or the economics of the housing situation in a community if leaders don't pay attention to housing needs?
Well, I can maybe speak to that broadly. I might also invite my consultant who is here with me tonight, I'll introduce her now since it came up, Beth Goodman with Echo Northwest. They are providing support to this project and doing a lot of the analytical work. You know, in short, in our system of housing production, most housing is provided by the private market. Local governments come in to, you know, provide regulations that can promote the development of housing and provide guidance on where that housing should go, how it should develop, but for the most part, it's ultimately up to the private market to actually develop that housing. And so, you know, when you start talking about the private market, you're talking about the roles of supply and demand, so those do come into play here in terms of producing housing. I will turn it over to Beth to see if there was more that you would add there.
I'll try to be succinct on this. If a city doesn't do its planning and isn't considering issues related to affordability, then eventually the housing prices will continue to increase in the city and the city will continue to be, come more exclusionary. And so eventually wealthy people will be able to afford to live there and other people won't be able to afford to live there. If you think about the desire of many communities to have a place where people can live and work increasingly, it's a place where people who work in that community can't live in that community, and that causes all kinds of problems, including transportation sorts of problems.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any questions in the room initially?
Yeah, I'd like a clarifying question. Why are we here as a joint session? This is our first one I've attended.
Yes, that's a great question. It has been a while since we have had a joint work session with Planning Commission and City Council. We were actually inspired by a meeting that we had sort of separate from this, but a rent burden meeting that we are also required to have as part of state requirements related to rent burden, which you'll hear more about in the presentation tonight. But we ended up having a really nice discussion between the City Council and the Planning Commission. You are both bodies of the city that will be advising and helping to shape this project as we move forward. And there's a lot of technical information that is in the packet materials that you received, and you know, oftentimes what will happen is we'll go to Planning Commission first and then City Council. We really just thought that for this information in particular, as we start, you know, at this first step, really start thinking of some ideas that we might benefit from being all in the room together at one time. So we are, particularly for the Planning Commission, I'm grateful that you were able to attend this evening. I know this is one extra meeting in addition to the usual one you have on your calendar, but we really appreciate that you are able to participate tonight.
Thank you, are there other questions in the room? I'm not hearing any, and so let's please invite staff to continue the presentation.
All right, thank you. I'll be brief, just to highlight quickly in our agenda, we've split this into two key component parts tonight. The first, and what we'll spend most of the time on tonight, is focusing on more of the technical work that we've started on in this project, just to go through some key highlights and see what questions you might have and if there's anything else you feel like you want to know about. With the remaining time that we'll have, and we have a hard deadline of 6:25, so we will need to wrap up at that point. We will get into a little bit about some high level ideas, thinking about next steps in this project. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Goodman, and she will continue with the presentation. We will go through the results of the housing needs and capacity analysis and have time for discussion. So I think the bulk of the questions, we probably want to save for that point, but that being said, I think if there's something that's kind of critical to your understanding of what's up on the screen, please feel free to ask, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Kim. I'm going to go ahead and step through the slides, and I believe that Councilor Linville, if anybody has any questions, you'll stop me and get them asked, all right. So next slide, please. So this goes to what Kim was just talking about, why do a housing needs and capacity analysis and a housing production strategy? Very briefly, we're looking at growth over the next 20 years, so through the year 2045, asking how much growth will occur then, so how much housing will you need by then and what kinds of housing? Asking a number of questions about your existing land that's buildable, and we'll talk about what buildable land is in a few minutes, and then putting that together and saying, do you have enough land that is buildable, enough capacity for new housing to accommodate your expected growth? And then we start getting into questions that are much more about affordability. So what policies are needed to meet Wilsonville's unmet housing needs for your existing So what policies are needed to meet Wilsonville's unmet housing needs for your existing community as well as new residents in your community? And that's predominantly what the housing production strategy is about. Next slide, please. So on the schedule, where we are is fairly early in this, which is completing the housing needs and capacity analysis. You can think of that as your factual basis. That gives you information about the housing market in Wilsonville, about your buildable lands, about affordability, about demographics. And that gives us the launching off point to start the housing production strategy. And that's where we start by looking at contextualizing housing need. In that, we go into a lot of detail about housing need by income level, which we'll talk about some today, but also specific housing needs of particular groups such as people with disabilities, people experiencing homelessness, different racial and ethnic groups as their housing needs are different from the overall average. We get at this through some of the data we'll be presenting today and a lot more of the data that's in the housing needs and capacity analysis. And we get at it through discussions that'll be upcoming interviews and focus groups, that kind of thing. We'll talk about that a little more later. So starting off on the next slide, please, with the housing needs analysis, this is simply a reminder that we are talking about housing in four different groupings. One of them is single-family detached, which includes manufactured and mobile homes as well as cottage housing, townhouses. We call them colloquially plexes, so your duplexes or your quadplexes. And then multifamily housing, where you've got five or more units per structure. This is for owner and renter occupied housing. So as we're talking about each of these housing types, that's what we're referring to. Next slide, please. So when we look at the most basic of your data, what we see is that about 43% of Wilsonville's existing housing stock is single-unit detached and 42% is multi-unit. When we compare that to the Portland region, which is Washington County, Clackamas County, and Monoma County, all those counties put together, so their urban areas as well as their rural areas, we see that Wilsonville has a different mix of housing because you're a city within our most urban region. And we also see that in comparison to Oregon, you've got a different mix of housing. But if we were comparing you to cities within the region, the other cities would look a little more similar to Wilsonville. So next slide, please. So when we look at ownership and renter, what we see is that about 50% of your households live in owner-occupied housing and about 50% live in renter-occupied housing. It hasn't changed a lot since 2000. It's bumped around a little bit depending on what's going on in the broader housing market. But what's more interesting is when you look at it by owner and renter, most owners live in single-unit detached or in townhomes. Most renters live in multifamily housing with five or more units with a mixture of other types of housing. A lot of those other types of housing weren't built to be renter housing but have become so over time, and that happens in all our communities across Oregon. Next slide. So here we've got building permits issued since 2013 to 2023. And what we see is the number of building permits issued varies by year. The composition of those permits also varies. So a lot of your housing built since 2013 was single-unit detached, 73%.
Excuse me, can I, can I stop you just a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Where we're seeing this, the narrative in, at the bottom, I think it's cutting off some of the legend, so we can't see that. Can we fix that on our screens?
I will move out of the way. So you've also had a fair bit of townhouse development happening, which is, I think, in part because of the kind of housing you've been planning for. And then a little bit of multifamily housing, a less, has been developed in the last decade than before. But when we look at housing that's entitled, where building permits haven't been issued, you've got things like your town center mixed-use area with 114 multifamily units, Villebois with 143 multifamily units and a little bit of live-work, and then your transit-oriented development area with about 121 affordable multifamily units. And so those have been entitled but not yet permitted, so construction hasn't started on those. Yes, ma'am.
So the definition of entitled, does that mean that it's shown on the comp plan and the zoning?
So entitled means it's actually come through the lane use review process and gone through the development review board. So there are specific approved plans for those projects through lane use. They're now in the building permit phase, but the permits for the actual building permits, which allow you to start construction, have not yet been issued.
Okay, so just to summarize it, it means somebody has a definite project that they intend to do, they've talked to the city, but they haven't started the project?
Correct.
Thank you.
And so those will be things that are coming up over the next 20 years that can house some of the people who move into Wilsonville or existing residents. So that's a little bit about the housing market. Now we're going to talk some about demographics of Wilsonville and upcoming changes. So you've got a younger demographic than the three-county Portland region with more young working age people, 33%. And so that is oftentimes in your younger age, you're a renter and you're looking to buy housing. So that's, that's generally speaking, the kind of housing need that that group has. And of course affordability is a big issue because income increases with age as you go through your working life. The other thing to know is that people 60 years and older are a growing segment of our population and we expect in Clackamas County to see that population grow some also. So you're looking at a little younger population here in Wilsonville as well as growth in your older population.
So I'd like to have a comment on that.
Yes, ma'am.
And go into a little bit more detail because I think this is a really critical slide.
Yes, ma'am.
If I were to take what I would think would be a model city, it would be a city that has young people in it, that individuals who are, have chosen to live here, they're early in their careers, they're at the point where they're in the earlier part of their earning potential, and they also, as you said, often aspire to eventually become homeowners. The fact, the economic facts of our country right now is with high interest rates and the cost of housing, it is very difficult for someone who's young, who is typically making $50,000, $60,000 a year and doesn't have a significant amount of money in savings to be able to afford to purchase a home. And I know that there's a lot of conversation going on that's contrary to this within our community right now that speaks to why are we doing all of this? This is a critical slide because these are young people. These are the future of this city. And those of us who are 60 plus, including myself, are aging out and we will be selling our homes. And hopefully, we will, as we sell our homes, as we age out, we will have those individuals who feel welcomed enough and appreciated enough by living into multifamily housing that they can afford, that can then go in and buy a home.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So to say what you said a little different way, to continue having a younger city, you have to have housing that is affordable for rental and then for getting into homeownership. And that's.
That's correct.
Getting into homeownership is tough.
It meets them where they are.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Can I ask a question that's just kind of based on that? Like it or not, we're a college town. We have a university and we have a community college campus in this. Do we know how many of those people are not planning to be permanent residents but are looking at student housing as, because there is no student housing otherwise offered?
So we could look at this data to see how many of them are up to 24 years old. Typically, when you're looking at college town statistics, you look at the 18 to 24-year-olds, get a sense of it. I live in Eugene, which has a very big student population, and you can see that being a little different. We can look that up and get back to you on that.
That would be good. So I was also curious about the younger age group living here in Wilsonville. Are they maybe part of families that they grew up here and now they're living in their own household? Or are they people that are moving here because of employment or maybe school opportunities? Do we have any information on that?
Don't have that kind of information directly, but I would imagine it's a mixture of all three.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the age distribution? Okay, then we can go on. And so your population is getting more ethnically diverse. Your Latin population has grown from 12% of your population to 13%. It's consistent with what we see going on around the Portland region and generally speaking in Oregon. When you look at your Latin population, on average, they're younger, they have families, they have specific housing needs related to needing housing that is affordable, is large enough to accommodate their households with children or multi-generational households. So it tends to be a little different type of unit. So it's not just, say, a four-bedroom multifamily, but I'm sure that that is some of the need. But it also might be something like a duplex or something with an accessory dwelling unit attached to allow for that multi-generational housing or other types of multi-generational housing. So on the next slide, please. So commuting. I don't think we have data right now on the income of people who work in Wilsonville, but I expect we could get that information relatively easily. That is important when you look at income and compare it to affordability, what's affordable. That'll show some interesting things. But this slide here shows commuting flows. It's from 2019. The 2021 data only came out a little while ago, so we just haven't had a chance to snatch that up. We certainly will. I don't expect that to change the, the, the structure of this. So basically, 9% of people who work at businesses in Wilsonville live here. So 9% of people who work here also live here. About 15% of people who work in, who live in Wilsonville work, work here. So, so you've got a minority of people who live and work here. But when you look at people who commute in, nearly, well, about 91% of people live somewhere other than Wilsonville. They could live right outside of Wilsonville city limits. They could live in Tigard or Portland or other places. We've got the information about where they live. I don't have it with me right now, but we know that there's a lot of commuting. I mean, all you have to do is, is take a look at I-5 and 205 and sit there for, you know, an hour or so, which we've all done, I know. So we know that there's a lot of commuting across the region, but to the extent that you want people to be able to live and work in your community, you have to have housing that is affordable, both for people with lower-income jobs, so people who have less renewative service industry jobs like accommodation and food services, retail, that kind of thing, and then also for people who have higher wage jobs. So your higher-level managers, your manufacturing folks, so on and so forth. So that, that really plays for a wider range of housing also. It's all these things that we've talked about as well as more information that's in your housing needs analysis asks for or points to a wider range of housing types at different price points.
So do we know of the 18,000 that commute in, if it's a question of housing affordability or housing inventory?
We don't know that. I've tried to do that in, for Corvallis some number of years ago and asking the question of, you work here, why don't you live here? And the answer in Corvallis, which of course is different than Wilsonville, was a wide number of reasons. Some of them that people prefer where they live already. Wilsonville's really well-positioned for somebody who has one person who works up in Portland or Vancouver and another person who works in Salem. You're not going to change that dynamic. But I'm guessing, based on the next couple of slides, that there's just not enough housing that's affordable in Wilsonville also, that that's one of the major reasons that we would see if we were spending the money to do that kind of survey, which I'm not recommending.
And do we know the income level of the 9,800 that are leaving?
I don't think we necessarily know that. We know some about people who live in Wilsonville as a whole, and so that would tell us about certainly those, those folks, but we don't necessarily know about that. On the next slide, so we're getting into.
I think, just, just one quick comment first, and also a welcome to Mayor Fitzgerald, who is in the meeting, and so I will hand the reins to her as well. But you, you mentioned that it might be possible to have more information about the income level of the employment positions that are within Wilsonville and that different spread of workforce and job levels. I think that would be interesting information to have because as a community, we're always, of course, concerned and considering the, the traffic on 205, I-5 and how that impacts our community as a whole. And so understanding these people coming in, people moving out, the more we understand that, I think the advantage that we will have.
I think we could bring some of that information to the table, yes. Your mayor has her hand up.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good. Thank you for waiting. I was here in Maryland with my son's military promotion, which I'm very proud about, just got back from that. I wanted to also add, if, in case it hasn't been said, that we have had our Economic Development Manager study the needs of our employers in Wilsonville. I don't know if this, that's been brought up yet. We have met with many of them. We do have, I believe, a $1.2 billion private sector payroll in Wilsonville and have noted that we have a higher-than-average wage in Wilsonville. So that's something that is good for the community and for the region. And I have heard personally, and I think we can get this from our Economic Development Manager, what they have heard from our employers about the need for housing. When meeting with the aerospace employer in our community, this is very significant, that is one of the first things they said when we met with them last year, even though they have high wages, six figures and up, which we, we're starting at about $100,000. You can see from the material, there is not a reasonable choice of housing for a family with one income earner making even that level. Just wanted to point that out, thank you. So they have told us that in order to expand and attract more employees, one of their concerns is that we don't have enough of a variety of housing.
And you will see why in a few moments. On the next slide.
I don't know why it's disappearing.
Maybe, maybe this computer needs to be woke up?
No, it's at the, on the last one, too.
Sorry, we're having a little bit of technical.
Yeah, it's up on my screen. I'm assuming it's not up on the DIA screens.
It's not showing on this screen either.
Hmm.
So I'll tell you what we've got up here.
Comes back. Yeah, but when you go to the next one, it disappears. All right, well. Yeah, we'll start, stop and restart. Okay. Okay, it shows that I'm screen sharing, but nothing's there.
What if you go past this slide to the next one or two?
Okay.
We can see it, it's just very dim on our monitors, we can see it.
Okay.
I can always describe to you what we're seeing.
I'm seeing it clearly in the remote view.
Ah, there we go.
Okay, so that one comes back. Cost burden is there. Okay, so it is just two slides. So I think maybe what we can do is talk through the two slides and then if you can kind of see them, that's great, and then we'll just, we can always share this with you separately as well to see.
This is slide 13.
So in the, how about, Beth, you start talking and I will look at what page this is on.
Okay. So this is a slide about median home sales price. What we're showing is that in January 2024, Wilsonville's median home sales was about $585,000. That means that half your home sales were above and half your home sales were below. When you compare yourself across the region, what you see is Oregon City down around $530,000, so not that far off, and West Lynn and Lake Oswego up over $700,000. When we look at the change since 2014 to 24, we see that sales prices increased by 72% or $245,000. When you look at incomes over the same period, they increased. When you look at incomes over the same period, they increased by 29%.
I believe it's on page 50 of the report and 69 of our packet.
Thank you. Correct. Thank you. And we'll go to the next one here.
And so the next one shows average monthly asking rent. And what it is, is it's all for Wilsonville, and it shows an increase from 2013, from $1,097 for average monthly asking rent, which does not include utility costs, up to about $1,733 in the end of 2023. So between 2013 and 2023, rents increased by about 58% or about $636. Incomes increased by 29%. So what you're seeing is incomes growing up a little bit, and this is not adjusted for inflation, rents going up more, and then housing prices going up a lot more.
And that is page 52 of the report, packet page 71.
When you say housing costs going up a lot more, are you saying aggregate?
I'm saying sales prices.
Oh, you're talking about single-family homes?
I'm talking about all sales prices, most of which are single-family homes.
Okay.
So sales prices increased much faster than rents, which increased much faster still than incomes.
So since we're talking about housing and what people can afford, have we taken into account HOA fees?
That is not generally accounted for in this information.
Because, I mean, that's really significant.
They can certainly be significant. So we're not accounting for, as we talk about affordability, a number of things that just isn't reported well in the data. So a household's accumulated wealth, if they have any, their debts. We don't have information about that, even at the state level, much less than at the city level, but we know that is certainly a factor. We don't have great information about things like HOA fees, and of course, interest changes over time. So the cost of housing, purchasing a home back in 2020, is really different than it is here in 2024.
It just seems like, I mean, we have a lot of condominiums and a lot of places that do have the HOA fees, that it seems like, even if you can't collect the precise data, maybe we can come up with a general thing and incorporate that into the report, because we're talking about how people are going to afford housing.
So that is a fair question, and I will take it back and look at whether we can get some sort of a sampling of range.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions there? So here, you're all probably familiar with the concept of cost burden. A household is said to be cost-burdened if they're spending 30% or more of their gross incomes, that's income before taxes, on housing costs. And they're said to be severely cost-burdened if they're spending 50% or more of their income on housing costs. Wilsonville, about 38% of your households are cost-burdened. You might look at this and say, oh, we're way more cost-burdened than, I'm going to pick on West Lynn. We must be failing. Well, I don't see it that way. You're probably succeeding a little bit better at being able to be a little more affordable. In other words, people who are pushed to the edge, which Wilsonville is literally the edge, like Gresham is the edge of the region. So they're pushed to the edge of the region, they're pushed in terms of the costs of housing that they can afford, they're a little more present in Wilsonville than they are in, say, West Lynn or Lake Oswego. So I don't take this as a criticism for Wilsonville. I take this as part of the reality of being in a regional market. And if you go to the next slide, what you see is that 55% of your--
Compare that to like a Newburgh.
Newburgh, their rates of cost burden aren't all that far off from Wilsonville. I don't have it in my head right now, but we just did some work for them last year. Honestly, this doesn't look a whole lot different than what you see across a lot of the state, where you've got owner cost burden around 23%. That's a little lower than I typically see. Renter cost burden at 55%. That's pretty typical. When you look at renters, 29% of your renters are paying 50% or more of their income on housing costs. Those folks are in real trouble, you know, just to put it bluntly. And if you looked at income, renters' income and rates of cost burden, what you'd see is that you've got a fair number of lower-income housing, households, that are just terribly cost-burdened. That information is in the report somewhere.
I am so glad that you brought that up, because I think that there's some magical thinking going on in Wilsonville among certain community members who want us to be a West Lynn, who want us to be a city that has, you know, a lot of big homes with big lots. But the reality is, is there is such a large population of most of the communities in this area that are one paycheck away from being homeless. As much as we would love for that not to be the case, fortunately, I'm not in that demographic, but I have been in the past, and I know how important it is to know that we are living in a city that supports all of our, all of our community and understands that a broad breadth of available housing for all of the different demographics really does make a vibrant community. And I want to just talk real quick, and I know I'm going to divert for just a second, because what I have noticed is that the Villebois Farmers Market, I'm going to specifically address that, has historically been held in, or the Wilsonville Farmers Market, has historically been held in Villebois. And the community that went there were individuals that lived in Villebois, mostly homeowners, some renters. It has now moved close to City Hall, much closer to the apartments. The demographic has changed. And those are individuals who are enjoying, their kids are playing, you know, in the water park, and they're eating from all of the food, just like, very different, but the demographic has changed. It is really important we serve our entire community. And as a community, we are physically divided by areas of homeowners versus renters. And I really, really hope that while I'm on the Wilsonville City Council, that we start to see us come together as one city, as opposed to an us versus them. So really glad that you bring that up, because those are individuals that are, in many cases, one paycheck away from homelessness. Severe rent burden doesn't feel good for anyone, and it's not their fault.
You'll see some more information about this in the next couple of slides. So this next slide is, it's really content-heavy, but I'll walk you through what it means. So when you think about a household of four people who has median household income in Clackamas County and the three-county region, that's income of $116,000, almost $117,000. They can afford a monthly rent of about $2,900. They can afford a sales price of somewhere around $320 to somewhere around $380,000. I say that one a little more eh approximately, because it really varies on how much do they put down, what interest rate are they able to get, how long is their loan, that kind of thing. And so I think we've got an example of a commercial pilot who has income about that, and that's an income for probably Clackamas County. And you can see people like lawyers and market managers, marketing managers, have income a little higher. When you think about existing housing, so you're, existing and new housing, but this will be mostly existing housing, your median sales price at about $585,000. That's, requires an income of $180,000 to afford, assuming that they're not going to be cost-burdened. That's almost certainly a two-income household, at least in my household, it would be two-income household. And it is at about 154% of median family income for a household of four. When you look at the average rent here, once you figure in some basic utilities to that, it's about $2,000. That requires income of about $80,000 or about 68% of median family income for a household of four to afford. And so when you think about housing that's newly built, an awful lot of your housing that's newly built, when you're talking about single-family housing especially, is going to be in that upper price range, affordable to 120% of median family income and beyond. Some of your middle housing types, so things like your townhouses, your cottages, your duplexes, those kind of things, they may be affordable, basically between 80% and 120% of median family income. Newly-built multifamily is more likely to fall somewhere around 80% of median family income in terms of affordability. So then, what about below 60% of median family income? Well, housing that's built there is generally income-restricted housing. So it's housing that's subsidized by the federal and the state governments. It has things like low-income housing tax credits, if you've heard of those, into it. It's very regulated. If you're going to get new housing built like that, it's going to, generally, not always, but most of the time, come from those funding sources. And then in between 60 and 80%, you don't have a lot of new housing that's built that's affordable there. It's hard to do that. It's private-market housing. It's hard to do that and have it be financially feasible. So if we go to the next slide, this shows your households by those income levels. So what you see is 18% of your households here in Wilsonville have income of 30% or less of median family income for a household of four, so that would be $35,000. These folks are the ones who are very much at risk of becoming homeless. Then you look at the 30 to 60%, that's 24% of your households, they have incomes of up to $70,000. Your low- and your middle-income households, about a third of your households are in that category. And then your higher-income households, 25% have income above $140,000. Now, there's some limitations to this data. As I said, we're not accounting for accumulated wealth or debt. We don't know anything about those, but we know those exist. And this also doesn't account well for household size, whereas as you have a smaller household size, you would have a lower income that would go with that. And so it's not perfect data, but it gives you a pretty good picture of the fact that you have a lot of households that, if the future is similar to the past, which we don't have any evidence that income is growing fast enough to be different than the past, more than a third of your households, getting on close to around 40%, I can't do the math in my head quickly, are going to need housing that is income-restricted housing. About a quarter of your households would be able to buy some of the more, the closer to median sales price newly-built housing, and actually, less of those, less than a quarter of those households. So you're going into the future knowing that you're going to have a lot of unmet housing need, as you do now. And so the question that comes out of this, that it comes for later, as we're working on the policies, is what can the city do to support development of housing that is a wider range of housing types with a wider range of income levels, so you can get that diverse community with a diverse range of incomes and a stronger community. So we're going to skip on to buildable lands inventory. That's big, big words to say.
And I do just want to do a time check here. We are at 5:51. But we are answering a lot of the questions, I think, that have come up, so if we can, we'll move through this next set of slides somewhat quickly and then pause for discussion.
Okay, so your buildable lands inventory, you all have seen this at least once before, at least I know that we've talked to some of you before, so I won't go so much into the details of this. But this is land that is vacant land that is unconstrained, so it doesn't have constraints on it like floodplain or steep slopes. So you've got two different types of land. You've got land that's in areas with active master plans, so like your Frog Pond areas. And then you've got other areas that are comprehensive planned, like your residential comprehensive plan designations. We've included the village there, because there's some amount of development still expected there, a little bit to build it out. And the industrial land that we're showing here is your TOD site. So when we're figuring out capacity in a few minutes, we're looking at your inventory of buildable land and looking at areas that are master-planned and active master plans differently than areas that aren't.
And I do want to add one point of clarification here. These are, what shows up on the map is land that is vacant or partially vacant.
That is true.
Because you see the highlighted master plan area for Town Center, and that is not generally vacant, but for this exercise, we're just purely looking at the land acreage that is classified as vacant or partially vacant.
And we will get to capacity in just a moment or two. So then, on to the next slide. So we are starting with Metro's forecast for 2085, 2,815 new dwelling units between 2025 and '45. And that's based, as I said, on Metro's forecast for Wilsonville. That if you, if you look at how Wilsonville has grown in the past, in longer, before 2014, Wilsonville was generally growing faster than Metro's forecast. Since 2013, you've grown a little bit faster than Metro's forecast, but just about at the pace of Metro's forecasts. So this is a forecast that you have to use. And then we forecast down into different housing types. And so we're looking at 45% of new housing being single-family detached, 15% being townhomes, you're getting a lot of townhomes in town, 5% being quads through duplexes, and then 35% being multifamily. And we are looking at those housing types, that mix of housing types, for a number of reasons. We just covered them quite a bit. A need for more housing that's relatively affordable, which is likely to be, your middle housing types and your multifamily housing types are more likely to be relatively affordable and offer flexibility in different unit sizes. And I'm not going to go over the cost burden and the demographics that we just talked about, but those are all figured into this. Along with that is a state requirement that the city planned for at least 50% of new housing is either multifamily or attached housing types. So there's a state requirement for all metro cities that they plan for 50% of new housing, at least, is either multifamily or attached housing types. So everything but single-unit detached.
What happens if we--
That's a state mandate.
That's a state mandate.
And what happens if we don't follow it?
You have to prove that you've got a good reason for not following it, and I would have, I would be very, very hard-pressed to come up with good findings of fact to support that, because of everything that we've just discussed. Thank you.
And can you define following it, meaning we have plans that encourage it or versus actual buildings being built?
Well, what's actually going to happen is going to be what's actually going to happen, and there will be accountability for that a little bit differently. But when I say follow it, I mean planning in your housing capacity analysis, planning in this document that we're talking about. So making sure that your land use plans, so how you've got land zoned, et cetera, can at least meet that standard. And the short answer is yes. You probably can do that. There's one or two questions around. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, is your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to check back on what you just said about the percentage expected in the future for the metro area, by metro, percentage of single-family dwellings as well. Know that Wilsonville is different than some other cities, for example, because as we know, we do have more multifamily than some other cities that have not embarked on this or that are older cities. In Frog Pond East and South, we already have that planned out for, I believe, 48 to 50% single-family homes and 10 to 15% multifamily.
Mm-hmm.
So when you're looking at areas, can you just restate what is expected in this study and how to account for the fact that we're already going for 48 to 50% single-family homes in Frog Pond East and South?
I think it'll become a little bit clearer once I go on to the capacity piece in just one moment. But the state, not metro, requires that the city plan for at least 50% of new housing be multifamily or attached.
So that is the state requirement?
That is the state requirement for all metro cities.
Okay, thank you.
So with this slide, we'd meet that, because the attached would be the 15, the five, and the 35?
Mm-hmm, yes. All right, so when we look at your capacity for new housing, and there's details of this in the report, which I'm sure if we wanted to get into, we could-- report, which I'm sure if we wanted to get into, we could get into, but we hadn't necessarily planned to get into it. But we look at the capacity of all your new, of all your vacant land and your master planned areas. And therefore, about 3,634 new dwelling units on your existing land base. About 2767 are in the master plans of Frog Pond East and South and also in Town Center, with about 876 dwelling units in other areas. So majority of your, of where you'll have growth is, of course, Frog Pond. And then, Town Center, we're going to talk about a little bit more. So Town Center, your Town Center plan calls for about 880 dwelling units in Town Center. Once it's built out, is that build out going to happen over this next 20 years? We're expecting that it wouldn't entirely happen over this next 20 years. And that becomes part of the surplus, 819 units that we're looking at on the next bullet. And so what if Town Center doesn't build out? Well, you're required to do a study like this every six years. And so when we look back at the multifamily housing that was entitled in Villeboise and on your TOD site, that's about six years of multifamily housing. That's about 300 units. So about 30% of your multifamily housing forecast. So if those two things happen, you're on target. You don't necessarily, if nothing's happening in Town Center, you're going to have a problem on your next housing capacity analysis. But you don't necessarily have one on this one. And if you get some development in Town Center, which we know you've got some that's entitled, then you should be able to have a little more than 300 dwelling units, closer to 400, 450 dwelling units of multifamily housing over this next six-year period. And the six years happens to be about 30% of your 20-year period. So we're planning for, you know, about the right amount of growth.
Are you accounting for the TOD in that?
Yes. The TOD site is in there.
And I do want to jump in and add here as well, just because we've, as we've worked through this, and this is a piece of the analysis that we are still going to continue to work on and refine because of this question. What's, what's unique and different about the process we're in now compared to where we've been before is the fact that historically, we've looked a lot at capacity as it relates to greenfield development in New Garth areas. And Town Center is kind of a unique thing for us now and starting to think about redevelopment as an option for capacity. The one thing we know is there's a lot more complexity to that. There's a lot more uncertainty in the sense that when it's a greenfield development, we historically have seen that we can be pretty targeted and accurate in knowing what the capacity is. There's a lot more variables that come with redevelopment. And so this is one of the things I think we're going to look at in terms of the 20-year, what the plan says is expected in 20 years and what might actually be feasible in the next 20 years and, you know, potentially make some refinements there. But, you know, there's a lot of things that can influence how quickly an area does develop. Many of those things being out of a city's control. So this is something we will keep an eye on as we move through this process and future processes.
Can I just ask, Mayor, just a time check. It's 6:02, and I'm hoping that we're going to have an opportunity to provide comments and feedback. And so, when is this portion of our work session supposed to?
Yeah, I think we are about there right now with the rest of the conclusion slide.
How about I go through conclusions, tell you a little tiny bit about housing capacity and housing production strategy, and then I will stop talking.
Sounds good.
Okay. So your preliminary conclusions, you have sufficient land to accommodate housing growth over the next 20 years. Your growth may exceed Metro's forecast. It's a little less of a concern outside of Town Center because you have to do this every six years. You need to continue to plan for a variety of housing types, as we've talked about. And let's see, on the next slide, please.
Do you want to come back to this one?
I mean, we've talked about all the conclusions that are really on here. I would just be repeating myself. So on the next slide, we come to the discussion. So people who are on our task force, have we left anything out that we should have mentioned?
No. I think you did a great job synthesizing all of the information in the task force, and we do meet again, I think.
The?
August 6. Yeah, August 6 is one of our scheduled meetings. And I think anybody who's asked, listened to my direct questions during this presentation realized that we have a significant responsibility to fulfill the needs of what the state has mandated us to do. And I think that the city planners and the council and everyone within the city structure understands that all of this is imperative, not only just for us today, but tomorrow. Because it really is housing our future. We will continue to grow, and we will continue to find some of those demographics. I was so pleased that you brought up the demographics, not only with the Latin population, which is 14% of our population overall and is often much more silent than we would like them to be. And interestingly enough, if you know demographics, what you also know is that those individuals that live in apartments are the least mobile segment of our population because they cannot afford to move. They are locked into where they are. So to make sure that we have proper housing, we have well-managed housing, and that we are always thinking around the corner for our housing needs in the future, because you're right, we are on the edge. We are on the edge of the metro, and people can go to Salem, or they can go into Portland, or maybe even Vancouver. But to really start thinking forward, it's really easy to do not in my backyard because, oh, they're renters, or whatever it may be. But it is also very important to remember that these are individuals in our community, and their voices matter, and that we need to think about tomorrow. So I'm pleased with what the task force is accomplishing. I think you were very thorough in your presentation tonight, and I'm really looking forward to continuing to having conversations with all of you.
So are there any questions, any information that you want more of than, we talked about a few things, and we've got those written down?
Well, I have some comments.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the material that was provided in our packet. I think a lot of this we've seen before, and especially, I think we saw a lot of it in the Affordable Housing Task Force data that was presented as well. So thank you for that. I have some concerns about the strategy. And I appreciate that we have some mandates that we have to meet. But as you said, if we have a growth of over 2,700 dwelling units needed in the next, till, I think it was 45.
Yes, ma'am.
That you said 40% of those people are going to need income restricted housing. And I don't believe that the strategy that we've identified addresses that. Let me finish.
Uh-huh.
And my concern is that we have identified 30% of new housing in multifamily with five or more units. And I think it's a leap to go from affordability to rental housing. Because clearly, in this report, you've identified that 55% of renter households are cost burdened, and 29, which is over half of those, are severely cost burdened. And I have said this again and again and again, and frankly, I'm, 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 it's not that I'm tired of saying it. I don't believe that rental housing is the answer to affordability for our citizens who are going to need housing at a different level. Because we cannot control rental costs. We were assuming that because it's rental, that they can, they can afford living there. And clearly, they can't when over half of them are cost burdened. So, and so I understand, it puts us in a position of having to identify, well, what do we do? But I will just say that until we come up with some other strategies, I cannot now, and I will not probably in the future, as long as I'm on the council, approve a strategy where 35% of it is rental housing. And so unless we look at some other way to accommodate them, and this is not because I have some idea that our community should be something else, you know, I'm not, I'm, well, we've heard from some of our citizens that they are concerned about traffic and density, and I appreciate all of that, and there may be, they may be proxies for other concerns that they have. Mine is affordability, and that's what I'm concerned about with our citizens. And I don't, I think rental housing is the most unstable and unaffordable housing that we can provide for our citizens. So I don't know the answer, but I'm asking for a strategy. I'm asking for a different strategy because this one doesn't appear to be it for me.
So what I'll say is we haven't really started on the policy work, which is really where the strategy comes in. So I think what you're getting towards is affordable homeownership housing?
Not necessarily. Because I think if we're talking about, like we've done with the TOD, or we've done, there are other strategies that are out there where we can offer affordability, whether it's low income housing, or it's other kinds of, I don't know what the answer is. But I don't believe that this is necessarily the, you know, and I, and I think what this looks like to me is, is a leap to rental housing being affordable. And I don't believe that's the case.
And I, I don't disagree with you about that. Rental housing on the market is not necessarily affordable as we see. But your housing production strategy could be things like more instances of the TOD-type development. You know, partnering with, you know, your state and your nonprofit organizations on building income restricted housing, low-cost affordable homeownership units, so on and so forth. There's a lot of different ways to get to it, and we haven't started talking about those yet. And that's where we go next in the housing production strategy.
And I think that's really going to be key to our strategy as we build it. Because I completely agree with you, councillor, that, you know, going into just assuming you're bringing in private rental owners, whatever they may be, and you have the vagaries of whatever their market dynamics are that can raise the rent unless we push in all sorts of rent controls. But it creates a challenge, and going back to what I said earlier, a lot of these individuals can't afford to move. So they can't afford the new rent. It becomes a bigger and bigger problem over time. So to come up with some strategic solutions that maybe even are, like you said, more affordable housing, bringing in something, some kind of shared ownership, whatever it may be, to be creative, let's see where we go. Because I completely agree with you, councillor. I think that going in and just say, we're going to just build more rental housing is not the ideal solution.
I don't disagree with you.
No. And I guess the, the only other thing that I, that I really, I would like, just like to say is that this report does not speak to density outside of making that, making that case for capacity. And I don't believe that capacity and density equate to each other.
They do not?
They do not. I believe that. And I just wanted to clarify that I am thinking correctly in saying this report does not address density.
This report does not propose increased density. It's assuming development at the densities that you already allow or that you've planned for in your, your master plan areas.
So, so one of the things that I guess I just am going to caution us to is that somewhere in the report, and I can't pick out the sentence, it said that the numbers in the strategy, the percentages, was pretty much based on what our historical pattern has been, which I agree with you, from the data, has changed little from, our housing mix from 2000, and certainly from 2017 to 2021. So I would just caution us to say, let's not necessarily tie into the numbers just because that's how it's been. And if we have to have a certain percentage of attached homes, let's rethink how that might look. Because that doesn't necessarily mean or equate to, it may equate to increase meeting our, meeting our unit growth requirements. But it doesn't necessarily have to be in multifamily dwellings. There are a lot of other strategies that could be looked at, so.
I would like to add one point, just to maybe help clarify, because I know, first time I read this type of report, I got very confused on that mix as well. And so I think one helpful way to look at it is we're not, it's not a specific mix that we're, we're trying to see if we can accommodate that mix in terms of understanding if we have enough land to grow, right? So if, that doesn't mean that we, you know, precisely are going to hit that 35% multifamily unit number. It's about understanding the spectrum of needs and whether or not we have the land to accommodate that spectrum of needs, looking at the plans and policies that we've already adopted in the city. And so I think it's not a strategy in and of itself. It's a tool to understand how we've been planning and whether or not how we've been planning is adequate to meet those needs in the next 20 years. Understanding a lot of these other factors that we've presented tonight and that we will continue to still get some information on will tie into, as we actually start talking about, new policies and strategies that we will look at as part of this project. And so future conversations we've had, we'll have, we can use this information and then really start to have some discussions around that topic. And I know we're probably not going to get really in deep in the strategies, and I want to allow for the other questions to be answered as well. So I'll just throw it out there for this discussion, if there are other ideas that anybody in this group wants to kind of just have us jot down for when we come back to you. We're happy to hear those as well, based on the information that was presented tonight.
Well, we got the mayor and council president have their hands up, so. Mayor, you want to go?
Go ahead, council president.
Well, I'll, I'll quickly just add, as we, this project continues, and I know there's outreach plans and focus group plans, and of course, the task force as well, thinking about the demographic information that we have and thinking about this question of what is the spectrum of needs for our city. I noticed, like, for instance, in our report on page 17 of the report, it talks a little about these different demographic trends that are happening within Wilsonville, in different age populations and household compositions, things like that. So will we have focus groups that specifically gets into some of these different demographic groups to better understand their needs? I'm thinking, for instance, the aging population. There was a graphic in the report about life cycles, and at a certain point, housing families may want to downsize. What is an appropriate housing type when you want to downsize? Is that something that we're considering? Or are we just considering price points and sizes and not layouts or types of homes, things like that? So just want to make sure that that sort of specific is being woven in as we're considering different demographic groups and the spectrum of needs.
I would say that we'll be following, falling in the middle there, talking to those different demographic groups, not necessarily getting into the detail of layouts, getting into the detail of beyond incomes, what's your nuanced housing need? What's your unmet housing need? housing need?
Thank you. And that, Council President Ockervall, those were some of the points I wanted to highlight as well, and I went to a recent meeting of Washington County mayors, and they had a presentation, a sort of a preview during that meeting of long-term population forecasts in Oregon, and of course, it covers all the different counties. I don't know if that, they alluded to that would be finalized and confirmed for use in the state of Oregon relatively soon. So I don't know if that has been, if those new long-term population projections are taken into account in this material yet. I'm sure that we will, I trust that we will. But what was highlighted in that meeting, and I see it in your material as well, is that Oregon's demographics projections relate to our birth rate and the health of our older population, and that we actually have a healthy older population in Oregon, so they're living longer, which is a good thing. And then we have a relatively low birth rate compared to other states in the country. And so that all points to the fact that household size is probably not going, just to your point, there are going to be people looking for smaller households, and there are going to be a larger group of older people. I recently met with the owner of a very nice retirement home in Wilsonville, and they brought up, one of their top concerns is actually their difficulty in hiring people to work in retirement homes because they have to travel so far. And he said to me that if we can't find some places for employees to live, it would probably start becoming difficult to have that kind of business in Wilsonville, because you have to get your employees to drive in from somewhere. So that brings up workforce housing of different types, and that's a word that people use for different formats, but I think that would be a good one to look at, is how are we going to house our workforce? And when you look at our aerospace industries and some of our higher-wage industries, as well as our daycare providers, you just see a whole range of incomes and all of those needing housing, as well as when they retire. And then the last point I wanted to bring up is focusing on Council Lenville's comment about density. Somebody started a couple of social media threads today about density, and perhaps somebody was confusing, thinking that all of this is going to happen in the existing neighborhoods. We're talking about land that has yet to be developed, and as I understand, the housing needs analysis and the buildable lands, even if we look at the lower numbers of projections, do we have enough land to do this in the thoughtful planning type of building that Wilsonville is known for, with sidewalks, signals, streets, parks, green space? Those are some of our community standards that we've long held, and so I believe all of this should take all of that into account as we go through the study. Look forward to hearing more about it. Thank you.
All right, we have four more minutes, and so I would really be interested in those four minutes if there are any other reflections or thoughts, particularly about, you've heard all of this information, any other ideas of things you would just, at a high level, not even like a specific strategy, but an area of focus, something that you just think we should look at. We'll obviously be coming back both as next steps to Planning Commission and City Council later this year to fill you in on the conversations we have at the task force. That being said, if there's any interesting ideas, we have three minutes.
Well, everybody's pretty much said the same thoughts that I have, but I'd really like to commend the planning staff and our consultants for putting together a report because you can't, what I really like about the city of Wilsonville is that we are a planned community, and that's why people like it. It's livable and attractive, and that it all starts with doing the inventory report that we have here, and that the next step is strategy, and I'm really looking forward to participating in that. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor, I'm really glad you brought that up, because in the three minutes we have, I would love it if our partners at Eco Northwest would just really remind all of us what your qualifications are to bring you here, because I think that it's so broad and it's so impressive, that how many other communities do you work with, and you're not just somebody we hired off the street.
I have trouble bragging this way. I've worked with three dozen communities across Oregon on this kind of study. I'm working with my colleagues, who are thankfully very smart, on the statewide process for revising GOLD TEN, the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. I have a role in that. I am not the deviser of that, which is good, because they're smart people, really smart people, who are doing that. And I've got colleagues who have been looking at this kind of thing from an infrastructure perspective, a financial feasibility kind of perspective. We work all across Washington, Oregon, some in California, and then we've been doing a lot more work in the Intermountain West. So I get to call on my colleagues and say, hey, does anybody know a good workforce housing strategy to achieve X and such? And so I hear from, you know, 10 or 20 different people who are also very smart, so.
Thank you, because I think it's important we remember that, you know, one of the reasons I ran for council was I wanted to think about what Wilsonville was going to be like 20, 30 years from now, and how do we best serve that future to make it a livable city? And partners like you allow us not to just work in an echo chamber and to speak just to ourselves, because that conversation doesn't work out very well long term, so thank you for agreeing to work with the city and bringing all that expertise.
We're delighted to, and I have to say, you've got a really smart staff here, so.
Just one question then, that's minor. I'm curious when we would be expecting to get updated commuter data, because the data that you presented is from 2019, and now we've got hybrid and remote work on the increase, and do we expect that to change any commuting habits?
I think it'll change the commuting habits a little bit, but not as much as you'd think. The most recent data is 2021 data, and so that's still a couple of years old. So we can, you know, dig that up, as in do the research and put it together, and I'll hand it back to staff for, you know, just about any time you wanted, so.
Just on time, guys. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Much appreciated.
All right, thank you. I had a little trouble connecting the audio there. So I think that brings us to the end of our work session, our joint work session with the Planning Commission. We are right on time, but I did want to ask if any members of the Planning Commission, I got here a little bit late, are there any comments you'd like to add from the Planning, any members of the Planning Commission who didn't have a chance to, or points you'd like to ask them to research? Okay. Sounds like we're okay, and as we digest and reflect on this meeting tonight, of course, we can all send further questions to the staff to prepare us as this work, which is happening for quite a while, goes forward. So hearing no further comments or questions, I will adjourn the work session at 6:26 PM. Thank you.